This is a Prescott City Council's study session. It's June 11th, 2019. Welcome, everybody. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ohr will be here shortly. Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Here. Thank you. So we have three items today. We do have public comment cards if you would like to speak on any one of these three items. And we have about, well, not quite two hours. We're going to push our voting session to 3:30, so we need to be done about 3:20 to give ourselves a little break. So let's go ahead and start with item 3A.
Discussion on three-hour downtown parking limits.
Mr. Mayor, Council, John Heine, community. Presenting you this topic. Actually, the idea of three-hour parking has been discussed quite a bit the past few months. Following visits by consultant Ron Drake, who as you recall was retained by the city, the Chamber of Commerce, Prescott Downtown Partnership and APS. As part of the public meetings and the conversations that we had, we heard a lot about the parking limitations in the downtown area. People replied to us and felt that two hours was somehow restrictive if you think about a visitor coming in wishing to have lunch and then visit some shops and walk around the plaza. We even heard, I've even heard merchants say that people literally like ran out of their store because their timing was at two hours and they felt they had to get back to their car. So this was discussed a great deal during Ron Drake's visit, but also in many subsequent meetings. And this was mentioned in the gap analysis, which was shared with council early in March as well. And the idea was then taken to the organizations that sponsored the consultant, Prescott Downtown Partnership, Prescott Chamber, Tourism Advisory Committee also discussed this matter. And actually, all three of the groups, those groups, support moving to a three-hour parking in the downtown area. Two of the groups provided letters and then the chamber was able to provide a record that their board had voted to support three-hour parking. So there are representatives here from the three organizations who would be available to answer questions if you like. Also noted in the report that if we were to move from two to three hours, there would be a cost of changing the signs of a little over $2,500 is what's noted in the report. And also just some other side conversation. Staff did a little bit of research, found out that there is three-hour parking in other municipalities. Scottsdale is an example. That was actually brought to us by a TAC member who said that Scottsdale is doing that in their old town area. I also went online and checked Flagstaff. Flagstaff actually recently went to paid parking in their downtown and most of the downtown, but their parking limits are unlimited in those areas. The exception is Route 66. They, it's free parking and has a two-hour time limit. But most of the downtown area in Flagstaff is unlimited parking. So again, representatives are here from the other organizations. I was also asked to have Tyler come up and speak a little bit about, you know, some of the other conversations that came up when we were talking about two and three hour where, well, we have this great parking deck. It's free and it can be unlimited. Why don't more people know about it? And we've talked about signage and some other things, but I think Tyler has a little bit more to share with you on that.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This idea actually came from Mark Woodfield, who discussed it with Ian Mattingly and myself, and we decided to move forward, wanted to let you know what's going on. We, searching for our parking garage through Google, for example, we found that it was not the first result that popped up when you look for parking in downtown Prescott. And we think that's wrong. We think it should be the first because it's free the vast majority of the days during the year. It has plenty of spaces and it's usually not completely occupied. So the idea came up to do a search engine optimization, which we're working with internal staff, Kenny Scott on that, to make it the top result when you search for parking in Prescott. Also, the idea came up about using one of these. This is called a QR code. And for those who may not be familiar, smartphone have applications where you can scan these and it pulls you directly to the information you're looking for. This specific QR code would take you right to information on our parking garage that it's free, it's open, it gives you details, phone number, a description, all those details that a resident or a visitor would need. And the idea is to have something, something like this, a sticker, probably four and a half by four and a half inches made up. And we're planning on placing those stickers on each and every parking sign in the downtown so that if a person is on foot, they can see it, they can scan it, know where the garage is. This will benefit those who may have run out of time and their parking, the parking limits, and need to find a different spot. Or when they come back and visit, they'll know that there is a parking garage. It's really close, it's free, and it's a great asset to have. So we're going to be, we're going to be moving forward with getting these installed on the signs downtown. Are there any questions on this?
Well, thank you both. I appreciate your work on this. I know it was a discussion from the Ron Drake consulting that we had here earlier this year. You know, I don't think anybody really knows what's going to happen with three-hour parking. I just know that for me, two-hour, I think, limits the time folks might spend, which then limits the amount of money they're going to spend downtown. So I'm all for trying to figure out how we can increase commerce downtown. I was impressed, you know, John Heine mentioned Scottsdale. And I was impressed with the fact that they had gone to three hours. I know the mayor down there and they've done a lot of work on this, a lot of study. And it is kind of for us, a test case. While it's a different city, there's a lot of similarities in their downtown. And so it's notable that they've gone to three hour and they see a benefit in terms of their commerce downtown. So let's go to questions, comments. Councilman Blair?
I don't think Scottsdale's like Prescott, though, however. I did a negative. I went reverse and said, what's wrong with three-hour parking? And to me, back in the day, and maybe they still do it, the city of Prescott employees would set an egg timer on their desk for an hour and 55 minutes to go move their vehicle so they wouldn't get a ticket. I don't think that's changed. And one thing we have in this community that's not alluded to is the fact that we have a plethora of real estate offices on two major corners in downtown Prescott. You go to three hours and they're going to be parked out in front for three hours. And those are customer parking spots. They're not for office use, as far as I'm concerned. We have, and I thought about this over and over again, we have a parking garage just sitting there, beautiful, ready for service. And I don't really have a problem with taking the parking lot behind Bashford Court and turning it into three hours. But I still think if we turn in the street to three hours, we're now letting those mobile food vendors and competition another hour against our restaurants in downtown Prescott. So there is some negatives that go along with the positives that may seem to be good by allowing people to sit there for three hours. If anybody's watched down there at the real estate office on Cortez Street, right across from Lamerson's, you'll see first thing in the morning, every single one of those spots are filled up and they're real estate agents. Well, okay, on the weekend, now you have real estate agents on both corners trying to sell their goods and we're going to allow them to stay there for another hour. I think we're looking at this the wrong way. I think our signage is the most important thing. Thank you, Tyler, for doing what we're doing to let people know that we have a parking garage a block and a half away from the square. And also maybe a parking lot behind Bashford Court that might be three hours. And just to take it a little bit further, I took Julie and myself this weekend to go find some ceramic switch plates downtown Prescott courthouse. We ate, we walked around the square and we were done in an hour and a half. So anybody that's dilly-dallying around for three hours probably isn't buying a whole lot in the first place. So I just looked at it a different way and I think we have some inherent differences than Scottsdale. And two of them happen to be those big, huge, two of the biggest real estate offices sitting on the major corners in downtown Prescott. And I'm having a problem with it.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, John, the first thing I thought of when you mentioned people running out of stores were employees running out of stores in order to change their parking spot. You know, I, I really don't have any systemic objection to changing it to three hours. What I do think, though, is that when you talk about Ron Drake, when Ron came to town, he was really surprised at how vibrant our downtown was because he was used to challenged downtowns, boarded up downtowns, and how do you get people down there? We don't have a problem getting people down to our downtown. You know, I'm waiting for somebody to give me a compelling reason to say, yeah, we've got it down to where there's this much economic benefit if we go to three hours versus the two hours we've already got.
When I was campaigning for office a couple of years ago, I think I surveyed almost every retailer on the square, on the plaza, and asking them what concerns they had with parking. It was a pretty strong consensus that they were not interested in meters. But this two-hour parking issue came up frequently where their customers didn't have the job and those spaces were being taken up by employees. So I see the same argument that Councilman Blair has, that instead of the two-hour shuffle, we're going to have the three-hour shuffle. How do you solve that? If there's a way that we can create some incentives or ability to have the businesses understand how important it is for their employees to use our parking garage? And some people who consider it, find it a little bit intimidating, it's dark, they don't think it's safe to park there. So if we could have better lighting, we are adding some community service officers to our police force and under this budget proposal. Maybe having better patrolling in that garage, just creating an image of much more safety, we might be able to encourage more employees to park there. Also having some ability in the inclement weather period of Prescott to have some ability to create a shuttle service or something so they can get to the garage, from the garage to their work, might help in that endeavor as well. So I'm just concerned that from the retailer's perspective, although the Prescott Downtown Partnership and the chamber, I think, have surveyed their members and they're encouraging here because they would like those consumers to be able to have more time to shop without having to run back and worry about getting a ticket. So I think there's enough evidence to support trying this. I think Scottsdale's experience is relatively similar. And if we can just, I don't know if it's just a communication issue to get the word out to the, to the businesses that their employees should be parking in the parking garage, then this might be successful. So I think I would support it in general.
Yeah, thanks for those comments. You know, you bring up a good point, Councilman Good, is the real issue is the employees' parking down here, which, you know, the three-hour doesn't, it exacerbates it, to your point, Councilman Blair. So do you know in Scottsdale or other municipalities, if this has ever been addressed and if so, how? Employee parking?
I don't know specifically about Scottsdale. I have seen this issue, this issue exists in pretty much every downtown that I'm aware of. And whether it's paid parking, whether you're paying at a meter or not, there are, there's been campaigns and programs in downtowns, basically sort of like, you know, park smart, don't, you know, keep the space open for your, you know, your customers parking the deck or parking off-street. It's been addressed in various ways, sort of more as a promotion or more of a, you know, I don't want to say a shaming, but you know, basically put a card in a window of a car that you know is there. There's, so there's different ways that it's been done. I will say that there are examples of enforcement, too, and I don't want to step into the police lane, but there are ways to monitor which cars in parking, but it can be very expensive. It's plate recognition technology and things like that. Not sure we're ready to go there.
I have a mafia background, you know, so.
Yeah, I thought so with that last name. I'm not surprised. We have ways of dealing with these people now, so.
Just kidding. I was just kidding.
So I mean, there are, yes, so there have been marketing campaigns. There's been, and I'm sure there's people that have been in Prescott, like Kendall, Jasper's, and folks that have seen probably some, probably some efforts in that direction of, you know, talking to store owners and employees and.
I know how Kendall took care of it. So, yeah, I guess this is important in the solution, I think, here is addressing this. And Councilman Good mentioned some sort of incentive, you know, you could use the switch or the carrot here and, and you know, maybe if there's a way to positively encourage them to go elsewhere, I think that would be helpful and it'd be easier to adopt a three-hour. So I've got a, I'll get to you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a business right in the middle of downtown, Lamerson's Jewelry at 105 North Cortez Street. Anyway, at the end of the day, I'm just going to share something with you. Tyler, you did very nice, thank you, but it's not free parking. It's parking that we paid millions of dollars for, the taxpayers of Prescott, and I thank them very much. It's courtesy parking. And we provide non-pay courtesy parking all over the downtown. Each one of those parking places has a value. And we invite people, whether they're from Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, et cetera, tourists on the weekend to come to this community, hopefully to spend their money to help this community grow, help this community pay for its police, fire, sewer, water, blah, blah, blah. And at the end of the day, I don't think anything punitive is a good idea. I do think, Mayor hit on it pretty good, is there some sort of an incentive that we can encourage business owners to ensure that their employees who happen to depend on what goes on downtown, except for the real estate agents and the bankers and people like that.
Your employees park in front of Raskin's.
I pay them to do that. That was the point. But you get my, no, actually, it's the Artful Eye. I send them down there. Anyway, they, I agree that something needs to try and, but this is an age-old deal. What you don't want to do is you don't want to use punitive measures to the residents of the city. And you don't want to take up all the parking for vendors, street vendors, et cetera, that are living off the taxpayers of the city, using that to promote their businesses when other businesses pay rent. That, that's a problem. So I do see it as an issue. We just haven't gotten there yet, but I'm appreciative of the dialogue.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, John. I appreciate the Prescott Downtown Partnership being here, Tourism Advisory Committee, as well as the chamber. We talk about parking a lot at the Prescott Downtown Partnership. And when I first went on that, with that group, that was one of the issues I heard, just like every meeting, we talked about parking. I like the idea of educating our businesses, our Realtor groups, talking to them about, we need these spaces open, not only for people that are shopping and eating, but also for your customers. I think a lot of it's education, some of the incentive, I believe, is built into that. We have a great garage. We're trying to clean up that alley and do some nice things in the alley behind Whiskey Row. There's some things that we can do there to brighten it up and, and just, you know, I tend to forget about the parking garage. And, but I don't sit anywhere for more than two hours. I can tell you, one of the things I've learned are those 30-minute spots. So there's a couple of 30-minute spots and I got a ticket one day because I didn't realize it was a 30-minute spot. And I think those, some of those, if you're going to run in quickly into something and run back out, maybe a few of those to combine with the three hours. I'm specifically thinking on Montezuma there and where I got my ticket was on Cortez. And so I think there's something, the combination of the two and incentivizing for the garage and educating people. I like the way that Kendall always educated his employees. If I find you parking on this road in this parking spot, you're gone. And that was a pretty good education, right, Kendall? So I think we should take a look at it and try it. And, you know, we, we paid some money to bring Ron Drake in here. Let's listen to some of the things that he said. I think we should respect our PDP, tourism and chamber members that are saying, let's give this a try because what we've got right now is not working. And we all know Realtors that work in those offices. Let's talk to them. I think it's worth a go, so I would certainly support it.
Thank you. Councilman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilman Good's comments. When I was 17, I got a job as a hostess at a restaurant on Gurley Street and we were asked to park in the parking garage. And sometimes I'd get off at 10, 11 o'clock at night and I didn't necessarily feel like I should be walking alone back to the parking garage. And so I think hearing, hearing the conversation about cleaning up the parking garage, making it feel safer is really encouraging because I think that would encourage employees to park there. And additionally, I was thinking, you know, maybe this is something we should try, this three-hour parking, but is there a way we could retrofit our current signs so that if in, you know, six months a year, we realize this isn't working, we don't have to then spend an additional amount of money? So I don't know if there's a way we could retrofit what we have now and then. So that was, that's.
It's a good question.
It will not be a matter of having to replace the signs. We're able to re-label them internally with that. So it'll be a matter of just, just changing the labels.
To Councilman Scholl and Councilman Good's point, I think one thing that we've heard consistently that all of you are on board is, we need to make the environment in the parking garage more hospitable, more illuminated. It needs to be a priority to encourage people to use it and feel safe when they are using it. So that's a takeaway that I'm getting that we need to work on.
Well, and, you know, to your point about recycling, if we try the three-hour doesn't work, we've got all the two-hour parking signs. Will keep those? Can we keep those? If you wanted to go back?
It's just a matter of changing the stickers on the sign plate. So posts, the sign base, everything is still usable. We just changed the stickers.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd kind of like to hear from Councilman Blair and Councilman Lamerson because they've been on for a long time and they've had these conversations before. And what happened after we built the parking garage and were we encouraging people, employees, to park in the parking garage? And what were the conversations back then?
Back then, they didn't have two real estate offices on two corners in downtown Prescott. You know, I think the three hours is fine. I don't want to be so negative that I wouldn't go for a change, but I think there's a lot of education that we need to do first. And that's with the property owners downtown, the restaurants. And also, you know, the real estate companies down there, whether people think that's a big deal or not, if you have 100 agents in each one of those buildings, maybe we take one of the floors of the parking garage and make it for real estate parking, you know, and identify that as their own private parking, so to speak. I don't know how many realtors are in each office, but we haven't even asked that question because you know they have all those rooms in those buildings that they go and do all their work. And they're just taking up space, as far as I'm concerned, on two major hubs in downtown Prescott. So I think we need to educate the folks that work down there. And if you've ever paid attention, I know Kendall has seen it, when we had vendors down on the square, they would take a bunch of those parking spots on Union Street and all over the place. Well, now that Prescott Mile High Middle School's open for vendor parking, guess where they're parking? At Mile High Middle School because they've been educated to do so. And until we make an effort at educating people what our desires are, they're not going to do anything any different, whether it's two or three hours.
Yeah, you know, Steve, back at that timeframe that we were talking, I was chairman of the board or something like that with the Chamber of Commerce. And the chamber's been working on this very, very hard for many years in collaboration with the PDP. At that time, it was the Downtown Partnership, if I'm not mistaken. This has been an age-old argument in the city of Prescott since I've been here, the parking situation in the downtown. It's a terrible situation to have, isn't it? That we don't have enough places for people to park. But on the other hand, it's a grace because at the end of the day, what that's telling you is people want to be here. They want to come downtown, they want to eat here, they want to shop here. There's, this is a good place to be. So what we need to do is figure out, how can we accommodate not only the business personnel that function downtown, but the visitors that choose to come downtown to use those businesses? And it's going to take a collaborative effort between the businesses and the public sector. I mean, each one of those parking places, including that parking garage, represents money to every resident that lives in this city because that helps pay for the basic services that this community needs.
You know, I think that we have to consider what happens, the unintended consequences of three-hour parking. Because if it's two-hour parking and someone, a new person who hasn't spent any money in Prescott comes in and is able to park in a two-hour spot, so they spend two hours in the spot and then they turn it over to another person who hasn't had a chance to spend money in Prescott and, and, you know, will have a two-hour spot. You know, are we actually increasing revenue or are we stifling revenue? You know, I'm not sure.
So would that mean you kind of like what Billy was saying with maybe having 15-minute parking and maybe having two or three, three-hour parking? In other words, move it along, you know, that doesn't mean we don't want you here, but if you want all-day parking or if you want courtesy parking, we got a parking garage to accommodate you. You know, that type of thing? I mean.
Well, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, to my opinion, and I said I'm not objecting to three-hour parking, I think that it's a knee-jerk reaction to say, let's just do three-hour. I think that, that we need to have more conversations about this, more conversations. And we need a plan to come up with before we make a move on parking. That's, that's just my opinion.
I agree with you. And the plan should include a trial basis, whatever we're going to do, give it a specific time to try and measure it. But you've got to do it at a timeframe that means something. You know, it's not one of those plans you want to do in an off-season where nobody from the locals come downtown anyway. So you got to kind of try and accommodate the people that live here, too.
Sure. You know, the only thing about it is, is that we don't really have any more an off-season.
Isn't that a tough situation?
That's a tough situation, yeah.
That's good. You know, when you were talking, Councilman, about that 30-minute, you know, across from your store at Cortez and Gurley, there used to be a bank on that corner. And those 30 minutes, in my mind, were for people who were running in to do a transaction and it took them 15, 20 minutes and they were out. So possibly, like Councilman Blair's saying, one idea might be where you see a lot of these folks parking for a real estate office, if there was a shorter amount of time for maybe folks new to town, they want to go pop in and see the Realtor and maybe look at some of the ads or the houses for sale or whatever it might be. And some of these areas, maybe you turn it over. And I know those businesses are going to change over time, but it could be a way that you could address a little bit of what you're talking about, Councilman Blair, if you had a shorter time.
Yeah, I think like Sishka said there, that the study of how many of the jurors are using, how many of the county employees are using those spaces, all those different spaces, like Lamerson comes with a cost to not only the city and sales tax revenues, but they come with cost to the customer or the company that owns the store. And I truly believe that education, to educate all of them, you have Pike County, educate the realtors, educate the business owners, it's an ongoing thing. And if you change it to three hours, who cares? But they still have to, and if there's an incentive hooked to that, maybe we make it an incentive. I don't know, maybe the real estate office provides a golf cart to take their employees back and forth to the parking garage. I just don't think that we've explored it. And Lamerson's right, we've explored this in 16 years that I've been here, about every other year, talking about parking in downtown. That's why we have a parking garage right now. But are we making the best use out of that parking garage? The answer is no. And what Tyler's trying to do through multimedia and stuff, I think is a good start with that. But I think signage downtown and the 30-minute signs are probably a pretty good start, too.
Mayor Protem?
Well, I guess I would, would like to go back to the fact that we have folks that have come today that are asking us to do this, who are the merchants. And I like the idea of 30-minute spots for people may run in, get things off of their desk as a Realtor, and they're kind of in and out. I think those spots would do well for that. But I really do, we have a lot of restaurateurs, restaurateurs, bar owners, they don't want people to just come in and be there for, they want them for more than just two hours. And if you want to eat something and shop, there, two hours is simply not enough time. So I would like for us to entertain the three hours like we've been asked to by PDP and the chamber. And they are member groups. They have members to their group. They can help us with this education piece. They can talk to the employers, they can talk to the Realtor groups and, and help us with that. And as, you know, we can participate in that as well. I like Tyler's idea of bringing some of the technology into this, that will help. But we've had the two hours for a while, it just doesn't seem to be working. So I would say let's, let's make a change.
Councilman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with Councilman Sishka in the sense that like this three-hour number almost seems a little arbitrary. There's, I'm not really, and so, you know, I think if, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I think if this is something you want to move forward with, we need to establish some, some way that we're going to measure whether or not this is working. Maybe kind of a before and after review in a few months. Otherwise, maybe it's not working. Otherwise, maybe it's not working. But we need to make sure we have some sort of system in place to know whether or not three hours is actually beneficial or not.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Chief, would you like to talk a little bit about the parking management system that's been approved? Jason. You know, when you speak of technology, we will have some additional technology that will give us the ability to have some data that may make this decision a little easier and based a little bit more on actual circumstances versus speculation. So Jason, do you want to talk a little bit about?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we'd be looking at is going to what's called an auto chalk system. Recently, the Sixth Circuit has had an opinion that when we physically touch a vehicle, that we're infringing on a Fourth Amendment right. So it's, that's not something that we have a problem with because we're in the Ninth Circuit right now, but it could be headed our way. So with the auto chalk system, it's a, basically a license plate reading camera that stores GPS coordinates for a vehicle and that plate. So we would be able to tell how long a, a particular car, how many times that particular car sat in a particular spot over a year. So we'd be able to get pretty much any data that you needed for the, the types of vehicles, the number of the plates and the timing of a vehicle that was parked.
Just to add to what Jason's saying, how much you enforce that is a policy determination that we would all collectively make, but the data would exist regardless of how far you went with the enforcement make. Whether it's two hour, three hour, or all day, you would at least have the information.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Uh, Councilman Blair.
I'm good.
Good, because you're at your limit. Mayor, Mayor Protim.
I really like Alexa's idea of collecting some data and maybe using where we are now as a baseline and see if the merchants, PDP, Chamber members seem to think that this works better. And, and certainly soliciting them to help us with this education piece. But I like the data. Is there some way to identify employees' cars? But you know, employees then would come and shop on off-hours, so they should be able to use those positions. So that's, kinda sounds like it's not a good thing to do. What about enforcement, Chief? Can you talk to us about enforcement?
Well, you know, Billy, to your point though, and I have to ask this as a chief, would it show the frequency of somebody's car being in the same spot?
It would.
So you could start making some inferences.
We wouldn't be able to identify that as an employee's vehicle, but we would know the same vehicle is in the same place.
Day in, day out, eight to five, Monday through Friday, you could start making some reasonable assumptions based on that. As much as Jim would like to have a customer come every day, that's all day, that's probably not realistic, so.
Yeah, you'd rather do this based out of relationships and doing the right thing. And maybe we can get to that point, but what about enforcement? Because for us to pass a three hour and not enforce it would be...
Yeah, and, and if we were to move to the three hour, I would say that the warnings would be a lot less frequent that we would cite after three hours. There has been a policy decision in the past that warnings should be our objective. Takes the same amount of effort to track a car, write a warning as it does to write a citation. So currently, about forty percent of what our one parking enforcement employee does is writing warnings. And so far this year...
Sixteen twenty-three?
That's the total contacts. The total contacts, including warnings and citations for all violations, not just two hour. Sixteen hundred citations so far this year, contacts so far this year.
So that includes sticking out beyond the line where they're supposed to?
Yes.
This, this all becomes a very philosophical argument. I gotta tell you, if you go to three hours and you're giving people fifty percent more time to stay in the space, I think at that point, you should stroke more tickets. Because I think you're giving people a lot more discretion. But that's me, and I don't know if that's a policy decision you guys felt.
Yep. Thank you, Chief. I think you can't look at the three hours as silver bullet, you know, because we're hearing a lot of different ideas and all of them need to be implemented. It needs to be holistic. You can't expect the three hour to fix everything because it's not, it's not going to. Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Along the lines that you were just talking about, I would feel much more comfortable with this thing if we had some kind of comprehensive plan to deal with it all. To deal with employee parking, to deal with lighting in the, in the garage, to deal with three hour parking and thirty minute parking. And I haven't seen a plan like that yet. I, I just don't want to lash out and, and say, okay, three hours. And then what, and then come back and go, well, really, we need four hours. You know, if we had four hours, you know, if you look at, at, at Councilwoman Shoal, three hours would have done her no good. If she had an eight-hour shift, you know, it was either the nasty parking garage or out switching, you know, parking spaces. So I just think that we need to have more of a global look at this rather than just a knee-jerk. And I don't mind, as part of the situation, the three hour. Just, I just don't think that the silver bullet is the three hour.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate that. Three, four attorneys ago, we went, we went through one of these deals. And one of the things that you can't do is discriminate against different groups of people. Solely because they work someplace downtown, you can't make public parking off limits. That's an issue. So what you need to do is you need to be able to think about it as to which way you want to try and go. And if indeed you're trying to encourage people not to park here, what are you going to do to get them to park someplace else? So you're right, Steve, we need a strategy.
Fair enough. Let's hear from the public.
Sandra Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Parking problems?
Yeah.
New York City, I used to watch them come out every couple of hours. Plop the money in the, then the coin thingy, back up to the office. It's an old thing. It's been going on for as long as there's been parking spaces. Some of the concerns about the downtown area. Congestion is one. Where are the tourists going to go that want to come in, don't know about the parking garage, don't know about other parking areas that they can walk to the downtown from? What about not allowing residents to park there at all? People who live in town, who know their way around, just don't park on the square, don't park around the square. Park in the garage or the one up on Union there, that little, that's never fall either that I've seen. Park on Union Street, but not right on the square. And as far as the lighting goes to the parking garage, you need to have good lighting to the parking garage too, not just in it. Because when you go off Gurley there under Granite to get into the parking garage, it gets real dark real fast. I've been by there at night and it's, I wouldn't feel, I don't feel safe there, even going by to the museum. It's really not well-lit. So that's something to think about as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Daniel Mattson.
Start it again, huh? Alright, so my name's Daniel Mattson. I live here in town. First off, being told I can't park downtown, I very much do not agree with that. I bought a house here and I think it should come with the right to park downtown. The thirty minute spots and that sort of thing, in my experience, when you have a problem with that is when like you park at the post office and there's a long line in there. So fifteen minutes, I don't think so. Neat, neat idea, but I almost think the thirty minute spots are a little too short. I'm wondering, could we try the three hour parking, for instance, around the circumference of the square first? Or something along those lines? Pick an area, try three hours in a smaller area and then you'd have the ability to compare in real time. As far as enforcement, boy, those cars sticking out to me are the thing that should be the number one enforcement thing. You, you lose the whole lane on Gurley. I've seen times where it sticks out there and I cannot imagine how people think that's okay. Another thought I had, how about if all these businesses post a notice about the parking garage on the inside of their door so that if somebody's going out thinking, oh, I better move my car, right there they can see, hey, there's a parking garage and here's a quick map to it. You are here and here's the parking garage. That, somebody who doesn't have a smartphone, doesn't need a smartphone, they can see on their way out the door, there's one. And we could also post some of the maps here and there. I'm on the board of Yalva Pi Regional Transit. We have maps at our bus stops. It doesn't take a very big space to put those. You could do the same thing on some posts around downtown. And, you know, so somebody parks in a regular spot, they don't need to have a smartphone to look at that. They can just notice, hey, there's a map, there's free parking, it's right over here. You know, technology's great, but there's an awful lot of people who don't have smartphones and don't want them. So even though I'm very tech savvy, I've forgotten more programming languages than most people, than most professionals ever learned. In fact, I was one of the beta testers for Office 2000. I don't like smartphones and I don't want to have to deal with that. I know where the parking garage is, but a lot of times I'm responding to an emergency. I need to take the closest spot to where the homeless drunk needs to get picked up and taken to CSU or whatever other crisis I need to deal with. So, you know, the idea of restricting parking to, you know, non-residents only, that's a non-starter in my mind. So anyway, I think we have time to talk it over and do this in an intelligent manner. I think three hour parking sounds good overall, but let's think it through.
Thank you, Daniel.
Barbara Jacobson.
Hi, Mayor, Councilmembers. I heard the word education and I really like that word as an old educator. And I also was, I, I don't know what that is and I have a smartphone. I never used one of those things. So I came in a little late, so I don't know why that's up there. But I'm aware to educate, a lot of times signage is important. It's really good. You brought up Alexa, that the cost of changing signs is kind of crazy to just do an experiment. I don't think we're going to get, oh, how many tickets is going to be a measurable outcome to changing to three hours? I don't think three hours is, is a solution. But I really think that some small signs below these signs or in other places around town to be friendly to visitors. Because yeah, Daniel knows where the parking garage is. I know where it is. I never use it. I never have trouble finding a parking space downtown, by the way. I have a wind-up parking angel on my dad. My son gave it to me. No, but I, they're there. But I think an educating sign, and I know signage is expensive, but educating is expensive too. To let people know, I didn't know there was unlimited all-day parking in the garage. Perhaps employees could have the top floor, because most of us don't like to go to the top floor. And it's educating businesses. And perhaps people could be educated that there is unlimited, or not unlimited, there isn't unlimited. We run out of spaces. There's all-day parking available in the garage and on residential streets. In other words, walk a few blocks, you know, because this town is getting bigger. And I was cursing at the traffic all day today. The heat probably made me curse more. And it's only going to get worse. And the parking downtown is going to get much, much worse. So to, the residents around downtown aren't going to like it, but you're steering people to the garage and residential parking oriented by, by the middle school lot and build another garage. You know, but get, put some little signs up to let people know, especially visitors, where there is additional parking.
Thank you, Barbara.
Russ Pilcher.
I walk slow, hoping that I...
Sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilpeople. I live in Prescott and I'm not in the business. Instead, I'm a customer. And usually when I come downtown Prescott, if it's not a parade or something like that, I'm focused to get something. I just got off the San Juan River and the hike shack got to know me pretty well because I would go to the hike shack and get what I needed. Or near my anniversary, I might find, I want to go to a jewelry store. Sometimes we come down and we want to eat. And I'm finding that two hours is, is an adequate amount of time for me to do the focused shopping that I generally come downtown for. So I can also state that I've just advised a relatively new resident when he asked, I told him where the Chamber of Commerce was, where he could get some maps and information about the area and so forth. And he was a little bit worried, well, where do you park? I said, no problem. You can park right in front of the chamber. Because they have limited time parking. If the Chamber was a big fan of three hour parking, I'm not sure why they don't have three hour parking in front of their Chamber. It works great. I'm just afraid three hour parking is going to make it harder for me to come down and find a spot. So when in doubt, leave it out. I'm not so sure that there isn't enough doubt at this point that three hours is going to be a solution or is it going to be a problem? I would vote for leaving it where it is until there's more specific evidence that three hours is really going to make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Kendall Jasperz.
Okay, I'm trying to hide out and not do this, but if you're looking for some interesting reading on parking and parking studies, there's about six of them laying in file cabinets in City Hall somewhere. I mean, there have been multiple committees in my thirty years of working downtown that went through this same, this same thing. I remember when they cut the heads off the, and took the parking meters out. I mean, it was, that was going to be the solution too. So anyway, a couple of quick things. I got a few notes. And that is, if we want people to use the parking garage, the number one thing, we need to be clean and safe. And that was throughout that whole Ron Drake extravaganza that, that was constantly brought up was people have to feel safe and the place has to be clean. If you want them to use it, that's what it's going to take. Also, the alley is the gateway to the parking garage. If you want people to use the parking garage, you need to make that alley attractive. You need more than just what it is now and more than doing a, an occasional power wash. It needs the lighting, it needs, you know, we've been, we've been looking at this, the downtown partnership has. We think it needs murals. We think it needs to be an occasional venue for something going on downtown. But activity is what keeps things safe and that's, that's what people are looking for. As far as, you know, different hours or how long you're going to go, two or three hours, you know, we all want people to use, you know, we want to be kind, we don't want to run people off. But at some point, if you're going to have rules, you need to enforce them. And I think that's something that, that we need to think real hard about how we're going to do that without alienating people. But nonetheless, if you don't have some enforcement, it's, it's not going to work. Any, any law, any rule. So I, if we're going to do some experimenting, I think that's fine. I see no problem with that. I think Prescott's, you know, personally, this is not the organization's, the downtown partnership's position, but I've always think we've had more of a walking problem than a parking problem. You know, a lot of times it's just people don't want to walk and there's places. I, I remember at least one study I saw, there's about seventeen hundred controlled parking places in the downtown area, in our area. Now, the parking garage isn't going to be the complete answer either, just so you know. If everybody decides to use that, I mean, there's, there's not that many spaces. We have four hundred and some odd businesses in downtown. You know, if every one of them has two employees, all of a sudden we got eight hundred employees looking for a place to park. And that's going to be difficult and we need to, we need to probably address that. So it may be a matter of developing more parking. One thing you can do if you use enforcement or if you use paid parking, uh-oh, I'm going to get busted here, aren't I? We're going to go to paid parking. You can use the paid parking to support additional parking. So just my thoughts.
Thank you, Kendall. Thank you for your perspective.
Mayor, that was last speaker card.
Okay.
I have a comment real quick.
Yes, sir.
And again, I don't know what the rules and regulations are for Meapay County, but it would seem to me, doing some more research where maybe Meapay County in cooperation with the city of Prescott allows the parking garage on Union Street to be used for city, or for, not city, but for employee parking only in the downtown on the weekends. I mean, I think there's some things we can do that will free up some parking spots. But I agree that the parking garage is, it needs to be, what it was intended to be is clean, neat, safe. And let's utilize the thing. It costs this community a lot of money and we do have the parking downtown. We just need to change our mindset and do education.
So Michael or John, can you address some of these things that have been brought up? You know, Kendall brought up the alley, you know, needing to be better lit.
Well, let's, let's start with some of the, again, takeaways that I got so far. We need to improve the safety and usability of the parking garage, A. We need to market and advertise that there is a garage, because it seems like a lot of people don't realize there is, B. We need a concerted, comprehensive effort on both of those things. In terms of the alley, we've had some discussions with the merchants. It's something that I've talked a lot about, about making the Whiskey Row Alley pedestrian-friendly. What does that mean? It means people taking ownership from their back door, just like they take ownership of the front door, and making the garage a way for people to come visit or work downtown. It's lighting, it's maybe ballast at certain times when deliveries aren't being made, so it's pedestrian-friendly. It's having some special events that we have on Montezuma, we should consider having in the alley. And I don't mean just the Whiskey Row Alley. I think you could do this, the alley behind Ricketty Crickets as well. And make it a new feature of our downtown. Who has a Whiskey Row and then who has a Whiskey Row Alley? We do. We should take advantage of it. And somebody made the point, the way you make people feel safe is you add human traffic and pedestrian traffic, because you have more eyes and ears. What the city's responsibilities are is to make that garage use more, market it more, make people feel safe. And that becomes an asset that's underutilized that gets utilized better. And I hope we reach a point that that thing's full. Because right now I have the police department looking at the occupancy rate of that. But just anecdotally, it's not half-full most of the time, even on a busy weekend.
John, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think that, and what Michael talked about with the alleys, and I think one of the things that came out of Ron Drake too is just marketing and telling the message or educating people about the assets that we have. And that came clear when TAC voted on this, you know, to, to recommend three hours. They said, we need more signage or some more awareness of the parking deck. So I think there's some common themes and threads in what we've talked about today that can be, can be worked on.
Okay. Mayor Proton.
Yes, I'd like to build on what Councilman Blair just said. For the party in the pines, couldn't find a place to park and parked in the county. And it was wide, there were like three cars in there. That's a really good idea. We should talk to them. I actually heard somewhere, maybe I dreamt it, but that they were gonna add to that parking garage. And so I think that's a possibility that we should definitely maybe just go into partnership with them.
And you know, something else, Mayor Proton, we need to advertise this location on the weekends. When I come downtown, it's just me. I park here. This lot's rarely full.
I thought that was my private parking space.
But we should let people know that they're free to park at City Hall on the weekend.
It's all about education, isn't it?
Something else real quick, Councilman.
Yeah, real quick. You know, I was thinking, if I was a tourist, I'd love to park in the parking garage. Because then I don't have to worry about, you know, I can spend as much or as little time down here as I want. As a tourist, they're not going, oh, I think I need to go park in front of Lamerson's. Or I need to go park in front of the Palace. They're just, I just want a parking space. And I don't have to want to, don't want to have to worry about it. So, you know, I just think that, that the direction this whole thing's going, which is the parking garage, the alley, the making it safe and attractive, to me is much more important than do we increase from two to three hours.
And I think to be able to have signage downtown, to be able to let people know, and through the merchants downtown, that the Chamber parking lot is open on the weekends, City of Prescott parking lot is here open on the weekends. And if the people that are here, whether they're merchants and their employees needing a place to park, how many merchants you think downtown have told their employees, oh, by the way, on the weekends, you can use the City of Prescott's parking lot? I can guarantee you none of them. So we need to do a better job with educating our employees and also having the opportunity to deal with the county and finding some of those shuffling things that will improve those spaces turning over, I think.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you. I was just gonna say what Blair was saying. The, the education element is huge. Fact of the matter is we've got a lot of parking downtown. Just, and you know, it's not just about tourists, Steve. It's about people that live in Prescott also. Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Meapay County, because they all come here and they're all welcome here. And we need to educate them, okay? There's, there's more than just the parking garage.
All right, good comments. I think we're gonna turn the corner on this. This is on the consent agenda for the next meeting, so we can just let that play out in that meeting, I think. You know, if you're opposed, you could have it pulled and we can have a vote and all that. So let's move on. Thank you, John, Tyler, everybody. Let's move on to item 3B, please.
Overview of potential water policy and code changes.
Well, good afternoon, council and mayor. Our next topic is water. How can we use it effectively? How can we manage it well, based on what we know from our experts? You all have been here at the last, well, over the last several months where we had presentations from Gary Woodard, Herb Dishlip, in regards to their work they did for us in reviewing our water codes. On a tandem track, we've been developing new policies, new codes to try to incorporate those things in with the city's practices so that we can better manage our supplies. This is an overview of those changes. We will have another eight meetings this summer to discuss individual topics in more detail. This is sort of all of the topics off the bat, so you know what you're gonna be looking at and I can overwhelm you right off the bat.
Perfect.
Now, with regard to sort of the new information, first we have what Herb Dishlip showed us, which is that even at, built out of our entire planning area, which is way up to Chino Valley, it's a lot of land that's not in the city, our projected demand, which is the blue, won't even come close to our supply, which is the orange line, for almost 100 years. We have plenty of water for the city. That hasn't always been explained, but we have plenty of water to the city. And that is a fundamental difference to how our planning practices were previously. Even in this model, you can see that as time passes, as development increases, population drives an increase in the water use. Gary Woodard showed us that that's not necessarily the case. This is his chart that shows the projections that we've had over the years and they all show sharp increases with population. What we've actually seen is a decrease in population, the blue line here. I'm sorry, a decrease in water use along with an increase in population. And that is directly different to how we previously managed our water. Anytime we increase population, we always assume there will be an increase in water supply or water use. That simply hasn't been the case. Now, they presented these relatively recently to you all in public sessions. They've been talking with the staff privately for some time, because they needed our information to develop their models and their, their studies. We also learned of their, their conclusions a little bit ahead of time, which allowed us to start working on these things early. It's a good idea to make these changes so we can get them out in the public, so we can have the eight meetings over the summer, rather than keep waiting on things and doing things poorly. Our sort of work group on water came up with several things we wanted to do. One of the first was to simplify how we manage our water. Right now, we require water service agreements. We require everyone go to water issue subcommittees. We have numerous spreadsheets that kind of track different pools and different reservations. We wanted to figure out how we could cut those things down, to make it more simple for everyone involved. We also wanted to incorporate the work of our experts. We hired people that are well-known professionals in the water fields. It would be foolish of us to ignore their recommendations. Finally, we wanted to continue, continue the city's tradition as one of the leaders of conservation statewide. What can we do to continue that role and even increase it going forward? So these are things we came up with. In order to simplify, and I was told right before the presentation, that the formatting may have not translated well. It looks like they were right. But the first thing we're gonna do is adopt the Water Resources Management Model, which was developed by Herb Dishlip. You saw that in action a couple of weeks ago. You see what it can do. One of the main things is that it's gonna reduce the amount of staff time it takes to track and manage all of these different things. If you can recall, we used to show a flow chart of all the different pools of water and the reservations for different pieces of land. And we had somebody that just tracked those spreadsheets individually. They were never incorporated together. This model will allow us to track everything at once in an automated manner. The staff time will be freed up to do other things. It'll also help us to look at the overall status of the city's water use. We don't have to look at all these single reservations anymore. And we don't have to come to you and say, the general pool only has 200 acre-feet of water, we need to panic. We don't need to put in place moratoriums like we have in the past, because we can look at the city's water use as a whole. Our entire supply of 16,500 some acre-feet a year versus our current use of around 6,700 acre-feet a year. We're in good shape. And we can watch those large trends to see where the city is going and make adjustments as we need to, rather than focusing on these individual minute pools. Another thing the Water Resource Management Model will allow us to do is to get us away from allocating water. Currently, when someone comes in with a project, we say, okay, you get three homes for every acre-foot of water we give you. When in reality, the city can develop about seven homes on every acre-foot of water. That's a big difference. And it makes sense for us to track those realistic numbers, rather than arbitrarily assigning a number, sending it out and hoping for the best. For about 20 years, we used the .35 acre-feet, which is about three houses per acre-foot. Maybe two years ago, we switched to .25. That's still only four houses per acre-foot. The Water Resources Management Model, the WORM, will allow us to track those things in real time and actually know what people are using, rather than just assigning numbers and then hoping for the best. We also propose getting away from water service agreements. One of the main reasons that we have these at all is just so that we can track what water we're sending out internally. The city has never enforced a water service agreement. And in fact, in the more than 20 years that we have them, each one is different. Year to year, things change in them. So one neighbor may be required to do something, his neighbor's not, and different than five of his other neighbors. It's, it's just not uniform and there's no way for us to track them. This is another thing that takes up a great deal of staff time. By ruling the requirements of the water service agreements that we have currently into the city code, we can ensure that those things are enforced uniformly citywide and we can get rid of one level of bureaucracy kind of at the front end of sending out water. We also want to revamp the, the way we do administrative approval. Currently, if you want to do administrative approval for projects, it has to be for four units or less, so around .6, .7 acre-feet. You have to come in, speak with the Water Resources Department, submit an application. The Water Resources Department does a review of that application. The contract is then issued, the contract goes to the water service or the water issue subcommittee before administrative approval can even occur. When it's called administrative approval, you shouldn't need all of those steps. We're proposing that we up the limit to five acre-feet of water for administrative approval and to remove obviously the water service agreements and referring those to the water issue subcommittee. We know using the, the WORM that we have enough water for these developments. Using the virtual accounts in the WORM, we know that the vast majority of these accounts are already even tracked within our current water management model. So there's no reason for us to go through all those steps and there's no reason for an applicant to go through all those steps. Now, we also want to incorporate the work of our experts. That was supposed to say incorporate on the side though. That's pretty close. The first thing we want to do obviously is adopt the use of the WORM. It, it's gonna be an enormous tool and I can't overstate how important it will be to the city simply to free up staff time to do other larger issues, rather than just tracking things with spreadsheets. In addition to that, we also want to put to use Mr. Woodard's model. He kind of showed us how we got to where we are, the steps that we've taken to be in this good situation that we are, and he'll show us ways that we can keep moving further. Additional conservation measures. Things like reducing outdoor watering. When we send out water, just play it on the yard, we don't get it back, that's not something we can depend on. So we're gonna do that through a landscaping code, which I'll discuss in a little bit. We also want to do that through the, the use of searing the city. Now, there are large swaths of the city that are currently unsued. Everything in blue there is potentially city water customers that are not city sewer customers. And as you're aware, as Mr. Woodard told us, one of the main ways we can increase the amount of effluent, we return to our system. We can increase the amount of conservation in our system is by increasing the amount of sewer. So we're proposing two main changes. First, that any new development in the city limits be required to connect to sewer. A lot of people are surprised that's not a requirement currently, but it's not. We still have quite a bit of development just on septic tanks. The second would be for existing buildings, that those be required to connect to the sewer system after the sewer system is available to it. We're just defining available as either abutting or immediately adjacent to the property, so that they won't have to pay for extension of the main, they'll just have to pay to connect. We're also developing financial assistance, sort of grace periods. Everything we can do to help people get connected to sewer, because ultimately that's what we want. We want this effluent returned, because it is a major source of water for the city. This will have three main benefits. First, obviously that we'll get that effluent back from all these homes. Second, that we can be assured that when we have an infrastructure project, it'll actually be a good return on the money that we send out. We'll know that people are gonna connect to new sewer lines. Currently, there's no requirement for them to. They could just decide not to and it wouldn't be a good investment. Finally, you probably have seen the map of our creeks and lakes, all of which are listed on, on the federal websites and federal lists as some of the most highly polluted in the country for nutrients. Primary source of those is septic tanks. The current city method for dealing with that is to pay to remove it from the creeks and lakes after it's already in there. A better, more efficient way would be to try to prevent it from getting in there entirely. Requiring sewer, more sewer in the town would be one of the, the largest actions that this council could take to try to cut down on the amount of pollution in our creeks and lakes. And we also want to try to push our conservation further, which is why we're going to suggest new incentives. Things that we know will actually get us good return for the money we're sending out there, so that we're not paying people to install toilets that they would install anyway. We're actually paying for things that are the, the highest and best that they can get. We want to update our landscaping code. Currently, the city has adopted a list of low-water-use plants. It's in city code. It's very infrequently updated. I, I can't imagine any of you remember voting on adding a plant to the list or debating whether a tree uses enough water, or I guess, minimum amount of water. So we want to move away from that and on to the Department of Water Resources list, which is updated. It is managed by a professional for our AMA specifically. We also want to make that a requirement on commercial and subdivisions, rather than making it a request of them, which it is currently. Finally, as far as conservation goes, we want to try to do what we can for the AMA. We control our own destiny. We know that we're in a good shape for the City of Prescott. We know we're doing everything we can for the City of Prescott. But what else can we do from the AMA? One of those things would be to allow for new connections to city water service outside of city limits. Doing so would allow us to ensure that that water that we send out is, comes back in a sewer. It'll allow us to apply our landscaping and conservation codes. And it would allow us to prevent the number of straws that are currently in the aquifer from continuing to grow. You may have seen this, this is all the wells around the City of Prescott. Each little dot is a well. And where it looks like it's just a big marker, that's a whole lot of wells. By expanding the city service, we can try to cut down on that number of wells and prevent new wells from, from going in place, because people will have an option aside from a well and a septic. It'll be done through a process. So the first thing we're gonna do is come up with an expansion zone. This is not it. This is the general planning area that will be the basis of that expansion zone. Properties within that zone will be able to apply for water service to the city. They'll have to bring a feasibility study to show that it's even possible. They'll have to, for commercial and subdivision projects, bring a cost-benefit analysis, so we can see what, what are the goods and bads for the city. In addition to those things, we'll have to extend infrastructure, use our landscaping and conservation codes. And for those commercial and subdivision projects, they'll have to pay a water acquisition cost. If those properties were to develop in the county outside of city limits, they would have to pay to acquire water rights. Water credits, surface water, they would have to purchase those in the market. We're going to make our water available for purchase in the market in those areas, too. Right now, we think that price will be around $30,000 an acre-foot, but based on the cost-benefit analysis, it could be on a sliding scale, so that if there are projects that'll bring a great benefit to the city, that may be something we want to just give them water for.
Could you kind of explain that a little bit more, that $30,000 an acre-foot sounds like it's a huge number? But understand that's an assured water supply, that's been arsenic-treated, et cetera, for the next 100 years.
Yeah, and $30,000 an acre-foot may be even a little low. We're doing those studies currently to determine what would be an appropriate price. We know that based on credits being sold in the area, that $30,000 is kind of right in the middle of those. Which is why that may be right in the middle for the cost-benefit analysis. If there's a much higher cost to the city, there will likely be a much higher cost to the applicant. Now, as I told you to start, this was an overview. It was a lot of information in, what, 10 minutes, 15 minutes? I can't imagine any of you took any of that in to the degree you want to vote on it right now, unless you really do. So, we will have meetings throughout the rest of the summer. You probably won't hear from me very much at those meetings, because we'll have the actual professionals. They're gonna be doing these things and can answer your technical questions about those, and sort of a panel set up, so that we can get those questions answered. We will have at least this many meetings, if not a couple more, maybe one for a review, and certainly a voting meeting at some point, if that's where this goes. This is a big topic. Water scares a lot of people in Prescott. But it shouldn't because of where the city of Prescott is. We've made a lot of good decisions in the past, acquiring the lakes, setting up our recharge plants, doing things like acquiring Big Chino. These are large, important issues that need to be discussed, and you all have a chance to adopt these large, important management changes that'll help ensure us the safe, abundant quality of water for the next few generations.
Ready for some questions, comments from the council? Anybody?
I got a couple.
Go ahead, Councilman Good.
You were saying that we've never enforced water service agreements. But there's a built-in enforcement with our tiered water rates. If someone has allocated a certain amount of water and they excessively use that, they're gonna be paying a pretty serious price for that. So, it's a built-in enforcement for efficient use of the water they're allocated. One of the things we currently have is an incentive for water smart appliances and fixtures, because they're allowed additional allocations if they are willing to adopt those. But by taking that off, then we potentially can allow development with the cheapest amount of building investment in fixtures and appliances. So, there's no incentive, at least from a builder's perspective, to try to adopt those things. So, what's your response to that?
The tiered water rates aren't something that we're changing. That's something that's been a large and successful part of the city's...
I wasn't suggesting we were.
That's been a large and successful part of the city's water management policies for quite some time. With regard to how much water a development uses, developers generally want to do their project. They don't care if they have 30 acre-feet or 40 acre-feet of water for it. They want to be able to do their project. And when we, rather than get away from allocations and say you have 30 acre-feet of water specifically and then never check on it, never enforce it, we'll simply say you have enough water for your project, and then track that project internally to ensure that it's meeting all of our current conservation codes. Additionally, with our building codes, those are the things where we require builders to install lower-water-use toilets and fixtures. And through our incentives, we can also give them a little boost to try to install those kinds of things. So, removing a water service agreement or even an allocation amount shouldn't do anything to really make anyone's opinion of what their water is change.
I mean, five acre-feet administratively is a development with 30 to 35 homes. That's a pretty good-sized development that needs to be reviewed. It still has to come in front of planning and zoning, I would suppose. But I would like to make sure we make sure that we keep appropriate incentives for efficient use of the water that they're gonna be allowed to have to build those things.
Yes, this is strictly with regard to water. So, if there's a project of a half of acre-foot that needs a replat or a zoning change or a general plan amendment, it still comes to this council for decision. So, this won't allow, suddenly there's a 30-home subdivision that pops up somewhere that no one ever looks at, those things still come before this council.
Well, if they're building a 30-unit planned area development, and they're currently only allocated so many acre-feet of water, but if they adopt water smart fixtures, they know that they'll get enough water to be able to build the development they want. Isn't that an incentive for them to use efficient fixtures and appliances?
I can say that because we have never enforced one of those previously, I don't think there would have been a disincentive under our current management policies. There certainly was no enforcement mechanism.
Well, did it work?
Not really, no. Because no one ever checked on it, no one ever enforced one. So, there's no way to say...
They just came in and said, "We're gonna build water smart standards," but they never, never put it in and nobody ever checked it.
Maybe I can add to this. A couple of things is, the water service agreement acre-foot calculation was an estimate, and it was, and originally was based on .35 acre-feet per household. So, I think the concept here is to get away from, is to go back to the actual, actual use, which we're now figuring it's like .15.
.7.
.17. And so, that calculates up to five acre-feet. You still have to go through all the processes, but remember, if we have stringent outdoor water restrictions or outdoor watering or outdoor landscaping, and we require sewer, then it, you know, if you recall from Woodard and Herb...
Dishlip.
Dishlip, you can't save the same water twice. So, if it's a five-gallon flush or a one-gallon flush, it all gets recharged back into, into our, into the groundwater, because it goes back in the sewer. So, I think the concept here is, is to sort of streamline the process. And, and, and the water service agreement limit, I think the idea, it's never been enforced, because for all intents and purposes, nobody ever reached the amount they were allocated. I mean, in other words, we don't, we don't measure it, and, and, because we overestimated the amount they were gonna use. I think that's, that's the concept. In other words, it's not as if people overused, used more water than we allocated for, let's say, a 25-house subdivision. It's that they probably dramatically underused what we allocated. So, going, so kind of going away from that, basically unnecessary bureaucracy. There's still gonna be a strict landscaping code. The building code will have water conservation requirements for fixtures and appliances, things like that. And that's where all that sort of belongs properly, not in a water service agreement. So, basically, as you're going through your permitting and all that, that's where that would get enforced, rather than through sort of a contract that, that, once it gets approved, it's sort of like Jasper was saying about the parking studies, it sort of gets filed away and nobody looks at it. So, it's better to do it in, in the proper location, which would be through the permitting process of building or through permitting process for, you know, what your landscaping is gonna look like. And, and as you also recall, you can't buy a showerhead that puts out more, unless you're on the black market. So, right, so, so I think that's the other issue, is, we don't need to require that or enforce that, because for all intents and purposes, you can't get it otherwise. So, I think that's, that helps us, it's sort of the macroeconomics help drive those, that reducing the need for bureaucracy, because the, the market says, "This is all you get." So, I think that's, those are, those are kind of issues that help contribute to reducing the bureaucracy and streamlining process. But certainly, don't misunderstand, don't misunderstand that all, it's only the administrative approval at the five acre-feet, which you get is a staff recommendation. If you decide you want to do something less than that, that's ultimately, you're gonna be your call. But, but it still has to go through every other single approval process, whether it's building permits, subdivision plating, rezoning, or what have you.
Well, it seems like water smart fixtures is kind of a minor actual benefit relative to some of these other goals. I mean, sewer-ing would be so much more dramatic and being able to capture effluent and send it into recharge. But we certainly have to look at a cost-benefit analysis for that, because that's not cheap.
And I think, and I don't want to get ahead, but on the Rebates and Incentives Program, where, what you'll kind of see, give you a little preview, a teaser, is that when you get into the non-sewered areas, that's where you start incentivizing water-efficient fixtures, because we don't get that back. So, that's your little teaser for the next presentation.
And they're already built, maybe sometimes with very old fixtures.
Right, right. So, that's where you start getting incentivized.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, Matt, thank you. I understood probably about 30% of that, but no. I'm sorry, Clyde. Why do I do that? Because you guys work together, I guess. So, Clyde, Clyde's actually gonna work with me on Thursday. We're gonna give a presentation to a group of realtors, and I appreciate hearing this today. One of the things I was very surprised about is the amount of homes that are on our water and that aren't in the sewer system. And that's, do you know, do you know about how many homes we're talking about there?
Upwards of 4,000.
Yeah, that's, that's very interesting. And I know it would be expensive, too, but maybe there's some way we can also incentivize that. And because I think, I think what the public needs to hear on this, this is about conservation. I'm hearing somebody said to me, someone said to me at church on Sunday, they said, "So, now, you guys have all this water, so now let's develop, develop, develop." I said, "No, that's not what this is about. This is about data, about knowing how much water we have, how much water we're getting back, and how much water we're actually using at every home, at every place of business, and what we can do to continue to conserve, especially at the commercials, right? Because we did not even know what, what water we were using at commercial until we did these two studies." So, I think conservation needs to be top on this list, and certainly the, doing what we can about the sewer. Also, to look at that, we're working so hard, like with Prescott Creeks and Watson Woods, to look at all of these streams that are polluted. Anything that we can do to change that, I think is something we really want to, you know, to go for.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
Leslie Hoy. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Of course, I have to come today and say something. So, first of all, I just want to talk a minute about public transparency. The Water Issue Subcommittee has been where water issues were discussed before they went to council, but the last, since January, while that committee was meeting, nothing was said about what was going on behind the curtain. Now, that's not to say that some of this looks really good, but I would hope going forward that we would have more transparency and invite the public in more to discuss these things, because as we look at what we're asking the public to do as we go forward, which is a lot, we're asking the public to conserve quite a lot more than has been done. And we're also being, going to ask the public to pay for some things, some things I actually support. But it's really important that we tell the truth. And so, I hope that all of this will come out into the public and that we'll all be able to work on this together, because that's how we're gonna end up with support to carry all of this out. One thing that people are confused about, and I think we need to be a little bit more honest about, is the water versus population. Yes, our population has grown and our water use has decreased, but that can't continue forever. I mean, if you just think about it logically, we can't add more and more and more people and have the water use go down, down, down. There's a limit to that. So, I think we need to be honest about that and just explain, yes, this is what has happened, but, you know, here we are going forward, this is our, our plan. On the .17 acre-feet or the, how many ever homes that works out, I asked a question at the Water Issues Committee in January, and there's never been an answer about how to, how are we gonna give water for commercial uses? And I still didn't hear an answer to that today. Previously, there was, when we were allocating at .35, that was point, one of that was for commercial support services. At the Water Issues Committee a few months ago, when Craig McConnell was still here, there, there was an internal survey about how much commercial use takes for those support services, and it was determined that it was approximately .1 acre-feet. So, I'd like to know, how are we, how are we gonna look at that? And I'm running out of time, so I just want to say, we do need to talk about the overdraft. The consultants didn't talk about the overdraft. We really need to think about people of the future. And in addition to our thinking about the overdraft, we really need to encourage our partners in the active management area to think about the overdraft, too. People want, I mean, people want to know about it. We can't look at just the next 100 years. We need to leave some water for people who come after us. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Let me just say, for the public here, you use transparency and truth and honesty a lot in your comments. And I want to make it very clear to the public that you know everything we know. We are transparent. And we asked Mr. Woodard to come here and evaluate our portfolio, and that's exactly what he did. And when we got the information, you got the information. So, we are transparent, and you know what we know, which is the truth. So, we are being honest, we are being transparent, if I haven't said that already. And it's very important for me to tell the public today that we are being transparent and that you have the information that we have. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Leslie, I'd just like to say that I remember specifically Mr. Woodard saying, "This trend of population decoupling will, will not go into infinity. There's, there's gonna be the point where it catches up." And he, he was very frank about that. And, and I remember that specifically because of that, "Well, that looks good." He said, "But there's a place where it's gonna stop, and it's gonna hold." So, he did bring that up, and so I just wanted to mention that.
Councilman Blair?
Well, and I appreciate you making the comment about being transparent. I don't think we've been anything but. And the bottom line is, we still, Clyde, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the ability to pump 16,507 acre-feet of water per year. Is that about right?
That's correct, I don't need to correct.
Okay. And the bottom line to that is, we have proven through the process, through ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, that we have a 100-year water supply to utilize up to that much water every single year. Did I miss something? And we can't even get close to using the amount of water that we have been given the right and been given the judgment to have a 100-year water supply. Based upon our population, we'll never get there. Does that sound right? I'm trying to be transparent here. I want everybody to understand, when you start talking about recharging aquifer or safe yield, those are different things in the amount of water that we're pumping and that we've been given the authority and have the judgment to do.
I don't know if we'll never get to that population level. Our model just shows we won't in the next 100 years.
Okay. And I think that's important, but when it comes to safe yield, I want everybody to know there's more players to safe yield than the city of Prescott.
And we do our fair share.
Well, we can, we, we've determined that if we want to, we can reach safe yield with our surface water and the Big Chino and a lot of other things that we can do. But where's Prescott Valley? Where's Chino Valley? Where's unincorporated Yapai County and the wells that are being pumped in the same area? You know, we have been responsible, we have been transparent, and we have done a superb job in water conservation and letting people know why we've been doing what we're doing. And I think that the culmination of these two reports come right down to the finish line of what we have been saying as a city council, Lamerson and I, for the last 16 years. And here it out, there's a report saying that we've done a great job. And I think people need to recognize, that's being transparent.
Michael, you have a comment?
Well, you know, regarding transparency and openness, the first thing I'd like to make a comment is, no decision is made today, nor would I want you or ask you to make a decision today. What Clyde said is, "In front of God and country, each of these topics will be discussed probably ad nauseam in front of God and country." The way our form of government works, it's a council-manager form of government, and you ask staff to look at issues and bring recommendation and ideas. And then you, in front of everybody here and whoever else wants to watch on television, then makes that decision and vets it. All this is, is us bringing something forward for you to consider. That's it. There's nothing been done behind closed doors, there's no secret cabal. You ask the people that work for this organization that have technical expertise to look at this issue, and guess what? We did it. That's it. That's it.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. You know, we bumped about sixty-seven hundred acre feet last year. And according to our general plan, we have about a, oh, our, our, our population is going to top out at about eighty-five thousand somewhere in the next thirty or forty years. So that means that we could, we could actually triple, almost triple, our consumption, our, our population base. And we wouldn't come up to what we're legally able to pump right now. And so, you know, I know you say, well, we should be responsible. Prescott's always been the low hanging fruit when it comes to, who can we pound on to, you know, get this safe yield thing taken care of for the AMA? Well, Prescott's only a small part of the AMA. And I would suggest that water organizations such as Seawag go out and spread the word to our neighboring communities about the thing that they've been beating on us for years about. And so, you know, I, I think that they're a great organization, but I just don't think that they have, they've been hiding their light under a bushel basket and limiting it to Prescott. They should go out and spread the word to unincorporated areas, to Paulden, to Chino Valley, and to Prescott Valley.
Councilman Sishka, I, I don't want to belabor this point too much, but just for my own edification, I showed this to Councilman Good the other day. Population data for this area since nineteen ninety. Population data for this area. Prescott Valley is up five hundred percent in population since nineteen ninety. Chino Valley is up three hundred percent since nineteen ninety. We're up fifty-five. Fifty-five divided by twenty-nine years is a little less than two percent per annum. At some point, if we're going to fix traffic and water and everything else in this region, a regional approach needs to be put forward. And also advocacy groups need to start pointing fingers to other entities.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I want to reemphasize that as well. I mean, the, the Woodard model allowed us to do a retrospective look at the decisions that were made in the past and how effective they were in reducing per capita consumption. And that was absolutely laudable. No question, they were great decisions, and it's resulted in allowing us to grow and actually reducing our demand on the AMA. But clearly, this is a separate but integrated issue within the overall AMA's overdraft pumping. And clearly, every time we have these discussions, the finger gets pointed at the lack of a legitimate regional work group that is going to get together and agree on water management policies that everyone can adopt and give us a much more predictable future of good water management. So we, we have to do that. The pressure has to be applied, even though there aren't any real penalties in the overdraft requirements for safe yield, and that's in a way unfortunate. If there were, we probably would get some of our neighbors to take this more seriously and look at the successful things we've done and emulate that. So that's important to know, and I think the DISLIP model also will allow us to start analyzing and building data on commercial water use. In the past, we just estimated that at point one acre feet. Fortunately, it turned out to be a pretty good guess. But now with the DISLIP model, we can actually start building data and analyzing commercial use and maybe establishing some policies on how best to manage water usage within the commercial part of our community. So all those things need to be looked at in the future. And, you know, I just think this regional, legitimate regional cooperation group is an absolute necessity. Thanks.
Let's go back to public comment.
Barbara Jacobson?
I have one question and then probably a comment. I'm going to assume from the presentation that that hundred-year supply of water includes the Big Chino aquifer, the water that's down there under the ground?
Doesn't.
It does not?
No.
Okay. It includes what we have available now? Yeah. Okay. Because when I talked to the previous city manager years ago, the basis of the number of potential houses in this area placed in our general plan was based upon that aquifer. Okay, so you've left that, because I heard Councilman Blair allude to that, you've left that out of the equation or it's in the equation?
It's not in the equation.
Okay. So these are numbers that are outrageously high. I mean, if we have lowered our water use that much as a community, I'm very shocked by these numbers because we have never seen these kind of numbers before. Because if you've, if you've read Edward Abbey's Desert Solitaire, which my son gave me years ago, unless you have a pickup truck with a bunch of trash cans in the back and a pickaxe and you go out there and you hit the Big Chino aquifer, you fill, siphon it and fill up your truck, you've got no way of getting it in here. So my concern is that we are overestimating, completely overestimating. And I'm, I'm hearing you that that's not in there, but I'll keep my eyes open. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
No, mayor.
All right. At this point, we will move on to item three C, please.
Update to the Water Conservation Incentive Program.
My name is Leah Hubbard. I'm the Water Resource Specialist for the city. Today, we are going to talk about the fiscal year 2020 incentive program update. Sorry. So a brief timeline. We actually were ahead of the times in a lot of ways. In nineteen ninety-two, we had our first conservation code. It gave less impact fees for new development that put in water-saving devices of the time. In two thousand and four, we formed a water conservation committee that made recommendations on what kind of rebates and incentives we would want to put into place, as well as other conservation things around town. In two thousand and six, the incentive program was created, and that's when the rebate program started. And in two thousand and nine, it was updated to increase the amount of incentives. In two thousand and ten, the economic downturn happened and for a variety of reasons, monetary rebates were decreased. And the only other change since two thousand and ten was in two thousand and sixteen, when the rainwater harvesting incentive was increased from ten cents a gallon of storage to fifty. So was the program successful? Absolutely. You can see on the left-hand side, that is monetary, so how, the sum of all the rebates versus the fiscal year. As you can see, in two thousand and ten, it started to decrease. There is a variety of reasons this happened. So we used to have a full-time water conservationist. She went to half-time in two thousand and ten. Like I said before, the economic downturn impacted rebates, and the rebates were decreased pretty dramatically in two thousand and ten. So we had less people involved in the rebate program. But as you can see from the right-hand graph, we still saved a lot of water through this program. Over eight hundred and twenty-four millions of gallons of water have been saved over fixture lifetime, which is two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight acre feet. You've seen this chart many times before. This is the gallons per capita per day. As you can see, our water usage has decreased. This is a community-based program, so this is how much the community as a whole uses. And the last number that I have on here is in two thousand and seventeen, it was a hundred and eighteen. This is reported to us from ADWR, from our annual report each year. You can see that there's some significant decreases in this chart. In two thousand and six is when our tiered rate structure took effect and when our rebate program took effect. And as you've seen from Gary Woodard, we have just been decreasing our water usage due to new fixtures and all sorts of reasons over time. So further statistics about the rebate program. This is a comparison of all rebates of all time, so from two thousand and six to two thousand and nineteen. As you can see, toilets are our number one rebate. If you look at this chart, I've removed toilets just so that you can see a comparison of the other rebates. As you can see, there's a couple that are very rarely used. Many of them are less than a hundred. So it's important to take a look at the conservation program as a whole and see where we can make some changes. Here is a comparison between the two thousand and six and two thousand and nine timeframe and the two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen timeframe. So the blue is the two thousand and six to two thousand and nine, and the orange is two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen. As you can see, toilets increased. You may also see that washing machines were removed in two thousand and ten and were hot water recirculators. We will revisit that in a few more slides. So what could be improved upon? First thing is toilets. So our current requirement for a toilet replacement is that you provide me a receipt that says you bought a toilet that's one point six gallons per flush or less. There is no requirement to show me what you're actually replacing, it just says in the rules that it has to be a toilet that was installed before nineteen ninety-five. And so we're not really sure what is being replaced. We could be rebating toilets that are already low-flow. I do have some areas of new development that apply for the rebate program because people just don't read that little line that says nineteen ninety-five. So that needs to be improved upon. Drip system installation, that is a full retrofit of a above-ground sprinkler system to a drip system installation. You don't see those often in Prescott anymore. We don't have a lot of above-ground systems. Not a lot of people are completely doing their whole drip system over again, and so it is very rarely used. Urinals. Urinals is a very rarely-used program, but I think it's because the commercial users don't know about it. And so we're going to revisit urinals in a few slides as well. Landscape health check, leak repairs, and rotator sprayhead replacements are all very low-money rebates. They're very rarely used. The leak repairs, for instance, are only five dollars per leak repair. Most of the time when people have leak repairs, it's a major leak that caused a lot of destruction in their home, and five dollars isn't really worth it. And as was mentioned earlier, showerheads have come a long ways. Our current code requires, I believe it's two point five gallons per minute, maybe even higher than that, it might be three point O in our current code, and showerheads are way more effective today at a lower GPM, and they're not that expensive. Proposed changes. So I actually had a different structure in this PowerPoint before I met with Gary Woodard. So Gary Woodard was here and presented to you, and then because he's very knowledgeable about rebates, I sat down with him after the meeting to discuss this with him. And this is what he recommended. He recommended that we drive the market for toilets. So why are we rebating for one point sixes when you can't find hardly one point sixes here anymore? So we changed this to just be one point O gallon per flush or point eight gallon per flush. It could be dual flush, it could be single flush, whatever drives the market here. The big box stores will start filling their stalls with these kind of toilets if they can sell it for a rebate. We also increased the rebate from fifty dollars to one hundred dollars. And as was mentioned earlier, we want to target septic customers. So if you're a septic user, we're going to add an additional fifty dollars incentive. So toilets cost, you know, one twenty to one eighty dollars, but then you have to hire a plumber, and so this is actually more of an incentive to truly change out your toilets, especially if you're a septic user. Next proposed change is through irrigation. So instead of doing a full drip system installation, many people replace their timers. Something that is important with timers is they must be easy to use. A lot of people set their timer at the beginning of the year, and they don't think about it, and they turn it and they leave it. And so EPA Water Sense-approved timers are really awesome now. They can control soil moisture or sense soil moisture or weather patterns, and they can be used on an app on your phone. And so by installing something like this, you don't even really have to think about your irrigation system, and you save a lot of water that way. This would be a seventy-five dollar rebate. More proposed changes. So the rainwater harvesting, the, what we're going to now call active rainwater harvesting has been very, very popular, and it will remain the same at fifty cents gallon of, per gallon of storage. Now, there's another form of rainwater harvesting that a lot of people don't think about, which is known as passive rainwater harvesting. So reactive rainwater harvesting is not for everyone. Your cisterns require maintenance. They fill up, you have to drain them. There's a variety of reasons that passive rainwater harvesting may be better for people. And so we are adding that as another additional rebate to the rebate program. A passive system is like a swale system or a rain garden that can let water infiltrate into the ground, and I'll show you a picture in just a second. So this new rebate would be five dollars per square foot of the drainage basin. And of course, by stop, by capturing this storm water, we get less pollutants in our creeks. And so this will also help with our lake management plan and it'll help with our creeks. So here is a picture. The left-hand side is those active cisterns. You're starting to see more and more of them around Prescott. And on the right-hand side is a passive system. So it slows water down, it gives it time to infiltrate. And we have come up with a homeowner's guide to hand out to people to teach them how to properly make a passive system. Next proposed change is turf removal. Turf removal has also been extremely successful. It has probably produced the most water savings out of all the rebates. And it is, there's still turf here, but you don't see it often. And so we would like to increase the rebate from twenty-five cents per square foot to fifty cents per square foot, to really incentivize people. Now, I think it's important to note here that we need to educate people how to properly change out turf. As you can see from the bottom photos, a turf is high water use, a turf lawn. Better is rock scape. However, we, when you have a full rock scape property, it increases what's called albedo, which increases the heat of your home, which causes more air conditioning costs, and it's kind of a chain reaction. And so the best is actually that right-hand picture up there. You want native landscapes, you want it to be green, you want it to have that kind of, you know, sun reflecting properties to it. Next proposed change is urinals. So most older urinals flush every time and use one gallon per flush or more. There's new hybrid urinals that flush once every seventy-two hours, which keep the pipes clean, but are also very water conservative. You will actually see an example of this installed in the city hall men's bathroom next week. And then we're also going to continue to rebate one quart per flush urinals at the recommendation of Gary Woodard, because not everybody is interested in these new technologies. So washing machines. As many of you know, I've been on the fence about washing machines. I have been back and forth on washing machines. Washing machines do save water, but they're hard to track. It depends on, you know, what you're replacing it with, how many loads of laundry you do each week. There's a lot of factors that go into this. After discussing it with Gary Woodard, he recommended that we should add it back onto the rebate program. He did a study, and I have a copy of the study if anybody would like to see it, that shows that pretty much, no matter what you replace, you're probably going to save water as long as it's off a very specified list. So we are going to adopt Tucson's list of only very, very efficient washing machines. And no matter if it is your first washing machine or you're replacing one, we'll give you a rebate for it. And that is what Gary Woodard recommended. I am open to hearing suggestions if people have other thoughts on that, though. Next one is hot water recirculation systems. So I have done a lot of research on this, and the research is just not there that it actually saves water. Now, everybody knows somebody who installed one of these in their home and saved a bunch of water. However, usually you increase energy usage with these. And by increasing energy usage, you're actually just increasing someone else's water usage. And, you know, if you're on sewer here, we reuse your water. A lot of people see water going down the drain and they assume it's wasted. That's not true in Prescott. We use that water. And so at this time, I do not recommend adding this to the rebate program. Future proposals. So a low-income toilet install. Best management practices, specifically out of Colorado, recommend that municipalities go in and replace toilets in some areas. You get the most bang for your buck, you could say. Rebate programs are automatically for those who can afford new appliances. And so since the city has been a leader in water conservation for many years, we are proposing that we do the next, next best step of installing toilets for low-income or fixed-income citizens of Prescott. So I, that project is in the works right now. You should be seeing it again in the future. Another future proposal is permeable surfaces. So permeable surfaces are when water can infiltrate through your driveway or your walkway and go into the ground. At this time, they require a lot of maintenance, and the staff just don't have time to implement such a project like this, but you will probably be seeing it again in the future when we have more, you know, I guess, more manufacturers, more options, so. And then finally, the commercial water awards. So as you can see from the labels on the bottom, Flagstaff and Gilbert do this already. We would like to create a reward recognition program for businesses. By doing this, we can change, we can team up with the Chamber of Commerce, and then especially in our downtown area, if you need a plaque that says you save water, you can get a plaque or recognition here at council or whatever works best for your specific business. But I can use this to target those commercial users so we can better have water conservation. So right now, my- So right now, my mindset is that it'll be if you save 20 or 30% of your water usage, then you can get a reward. That way, we can compare everybody together, because it's a percentage-based system. Marketing. So the general public lack a lot of knowledge about the rebate program, and that causes it to be very underutilized. We would like to increase awareness of this new program through a lot of media resources. It's also important, we don't just serve inside-city limits. You've seen that in the modeling lately. The rebate program is available for everybody who is a Prescott water user. So that includes Chino Valley. That includes Yavapai County. And we, of course, want to make septic customers a priority. One way we can do that is through alliances. So the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, they could very easily help me generate interest. They may have more volunteers to help spread the message. They can also hand out rebate forms for us. We want to target landscapers and industry professionals. I already do this at the Home and Garden Show each year. However, we have a business license database we can target, and there's a lot of means that we can target these professionals. And then, of course, you all. You have radio shows. You have interviews. And so we'll provide talking points, so you can discuss the rebate program further. We're also going to come up with a rebate education card. This is a card for various audiences. I actually made one this morning, if you'd like to pass it around. This card could be mailed to certain professionals or unsued neighborhoods or wherever we would like to target. I do not recommend we send a mass mailer to every billing customer for a variety of reasons. Best management practices show that most people open their bill and throw it away. And we want to be targeting people. If we send out an insert to 24,000 billing customers, everybody who's replaced a toilet in the last 10 years is going to send me a rebate form. And so this will save staff time, and it will let us actually send it to people we want to target. As far as a marketing timeline, so July 1st, we'd like to have this in effect for the new fiscal year, so you'll be seeing it in voting session soon. From July 1st to September 1st, we'll just target all forms of media with this quote-unquote "new conservation program." We really want the general public to know about this. So this will include radio, Facebook, press releases, pretty much a lot of things that we already do and have been doing, but we're going to push it really hard. September 1st through December 31st, we're going to target those toilet rebates specifically with the emphasis on septic. As you saw from Clyde's maps, we know where those septic customers are, so we can use the model to now target those people. And then January 1st through June 30th, we'll push passive rainwater harvesting. This gives people time to kind of implement it into their business strategy if they're landscape professionals, and it'll also parallel with our lakes management plan. And then, of course, over the full fiscal year, we'll still measure program effectiveness and present it to you. And that's it. Any questions or comments?
Nicely done.
Leah, it's a great presentation. I love to see all of the influence of particularly Gary Woodard's data helping, you know, really drive the incentive, so, great job. I want to go to public comment first, please.
I don't have any.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Yes, I'm really glad to see that the washing machines are going back in there, because I really do think those have been, come a long way, and it helps folks. So, and what was the other one that you gave more?
Hot water.
$50. Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Or septic.
The septic.
The septic.
Yeah, that's another good one that's, that's really going to incentivize rather than punish, so.
Yes. And that's just on toilet rebates.
Yes.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Yeah, Leah, I want to applaud your hard work on this area. This is just another example of the fact that we've done a number of really wonderful programs over the years, but we can always do a little bit better. And especially as technology advances, being able to adopt those new advances in fixtures and appliances will continue to drive our water use per capita down, and again, allow us to lead the community and the Quad Cities and the county in the best practices to help them to do it as well. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments from the council? All right. Thank you so much, Leah. Great job. This meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene in about five minutes.